Call this meeting the North Am City Council order for July 10. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take role?
Bona?
Here.
Buddington? Cohen?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
LaForest?
Here.
Moran?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Please stand for a moment of silence. Tonight in remembrance will be Mildred Manson, who became the North Am City Clerk in 1951 after service as Assistant Clerk. She served as City Clerk for 25 years. She also served as City Counselor for two years and is friend of the North Am's Public Library. And also David Lowery, mathematics teacher at Drury High School. And the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need the approval of the minutes for June 26.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Minutes approved. Same. Okay, thank you. An order appropriating the amount of $28,000 from municipal tech fund to general government. Miscellaneous expense, miscellaneous purchased. In City Council, June 12, 2018, voted to refer to Public Services Committee and postpone to the meeting of July 10. We need a motion to adopt. No discussion can be talked until we get a motion. Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
We have motion from Counsel Moran and a second from Counsel Harpen. Do we have discussion? Yes, Counsel Moran.
I'd like to, uh, the minutes from our meeting are in the packet, so I can briefly summarize them. You'll find the minutes to the pa- uh, in the packet along with the information technology assessment for the city of North Adam or North Hampton and the city of Salem. During our, our meeting, Dick Daly from the Edwards Collins Center for Public Management was there to answer questions. So per Daly, the North Hampton assessment was similar to what we'd be getting if we were to move ahead with the project. A lot of communities that are funding these assessments are done through the Community Compact Program, which we have used for other projects. The report only gives recommendation and doesn't endorse specific products, and the assessment would be comprehensive, which would be looking to bring the city and school under one roof. So Mayor Bernard was there, interested in the interview process that's going with the compiling of the reports, and the assessment would help to determine the type of employee to hire, as well as the overall path and plan for upgrade. Kathy Wall was there, the MIS Director, and she was able to shed light on the fact that kind of 75 to 80 percent of the information for the assessment would come from her. It seemed that in other communities, it was a larger pool of people that would be interviewed to compile this information, where here, because of our circumstances and the size of our community, most of the information would come from her. Kind of in her mind, there was already three major systems in need of upgrade. The phone system was end of life in November 17. The data center was last updated in 2011, and the KVS financial software is from 1995. As well as staffing, which is an assistant position is needed for upgrades and maintenance of the system. And the last assistant was in 2011, 2014. Everything that we talked about was similar to what we had spoken about prior to the committee meeting. Counselor Forrest, you can speak on this yourself, but it's kind of the North Hampton and the Salem assessment seemed, I guess I would say, kinda generic and basic and common sense. You can review what their recommendations were. And I think what we took out of it was the assessment seemed to be kind of a luxury, not a necessity, especially at a price tag of $28,000. It seemed to be fairly steep, and we already know, we've already, per Kathy, we've already identified the problem that the city knows it has to fix, and $28,000 could possibly be spent more efficiently. From my point of view, it seemed that the assessment was funded by a grant. It would be appropriate. And maybe the possible creation of an IT steering committee would be beneficial to help move the city in the direction of actually providing not only what we should be upgrading, but what software we should then be moving towards, which the assessment from the Collins Institute would not do. So the general consensus of the committee was that the recommendations from the Collins Center for both Salem and North Hampton assessments were, were kind of basic and generic, and with Kathy Wall providing 75 to 80 percent of the information for the assessment, and having already identified three critical systems in need of upgrades, $28,000 could be possibly better spent within the department. So the motion from the Public Service Committee was to deny the appropriation of $28,000 from the-
Recommendation.
Recommendation, excuse me. That was our recommendation. And that's where we stood.
Okay, thank you. We can have discussion from the counselors, or if I didn't know if the mayor wanted to give your input first of where, how you feel after that meeting, and then the counselors can respond to that. Or would you rather counselor speak first, or go back and forth?
I'm happy to have the counselors speak, and then if there's anything to-
Okay. So, uh, counselors for discussion. Hello? Okay.
Counselor Moran summarized much of what I said at the meeting, so I don't, you know, know that I have anything more to, you know, to contribute. I, I will add that I just don't feel this is the study that the information systems in the city needs. I think it needs to be more specific, offer specific recommendations for upgrades of existing software, or to move to new software, and the Collins Institute will not provide that information as part of their study.
Sorry?
The, um, I guess my question back to the mayor is after, obviously, you've sat through that committee meeting, and this is something you brought forward. Now, my understanding is not so much was a, you were looking for a sort of report on specifically what we need in the IT, but a direction of who, what kind of person you need to be hired for the IT to take it in a certain direction, but I could be wrong. But that's, so, that's, that's how I understood it, is it would help you end up hiring someone into that position.
It's staffing strategy priority, what, what is the, what are the capital investment needs in, in technology? I have, I have some, some places where I would like to see the, the projects that were identified by the MIS Director better clarified before we move forward with them, but that's something that we can take care of internally. I think we, we just have a, a difference of opinion about the, the approach and how we, and how we get there, but I don't, I don't see a need to, to belabor the, the point it having been discussed fairly substantively here, as well as in the Public Services Meeting.
Well, I guess again, my question will be, and again, if any counselors do want to speak, let me know, is, this is something you brought, you requested.
Yes.
You, you, we've had the committee meeting. Do you still feel strongly this is something you would prefer?
I feel, I feel very strongly that we need an independent assessment.
My opinion is, meanwhile, I, it, 28,000, sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but when I think of other things that we have spent money on for reports, when, when we have to do, uh, do, uh, the reports for the schools, when we wanted a new school, I'm trying to think the, the right name, but, you know, we'll spend 600,000, 800,000 that we need to, to do, to get a report to decide what we're gonna move forward with a new school. It's not about the actual new school, it's to give us direction on where we should go with a new school, and, and feasibility study. And, uh, you know, those are 600,000 to 800,000 dollars, and you can literally come out of that never building a new school. Um, I think when cities and towns hire superintendents, again, a lot of times they would go through special committees, special hiring companies, and they'll spend 50,000 to 100,000 dollars to hire a superintendent. So, um, myself as a counselor, this is not my staff are, you know, that I'm hiring, this is someone that the mayor would end up hiring under his, his staffing, his administration, and I just feel like if it's something he feels that will help him decide on the right staff of moving the IT department forward, um, you know, I will support it. I may be in the minority, but I just feel if, if it's making his job, if he, you know, the IT department we know needs to be reshaped, and I don't think this is specifically about what needs to be done in the IT department, but it helps him with the decision of that person, that right person of who fills that position. So I wound up supporting it. But if there's no other discussion, any discussion, yes, Counsel Liam.
Just to that point, I think it's not exactly a, an apples-to-apples comparison with a, the school feasibility study. I think when we look at those, it's, there's a lot of grants that go into that, it's a lot of bond issues that go into that. This is, you know, straight out of a, a city funding line, so it's a little bit different in that respect, and I know that it's a smaller number, but I, I do believe that, you know, if there was a grant opportunity out there, kinda like what Counselor Moran had said during the actual meeting, that would be a very different story.
Counsel Wilkinson and Counsel LaForest.
Well, we may need an assessment, but I don't believe we need this one. When I hear the word generic, when I hear the word, they're not gonna make any specific recommendations, what's $28,000 buying you? So, I think we have a pretty good idea, listening to Counselor Moran, we have a pretty good idea already what antiquated systems we have, and 28,000 can go a long ways to help for paying for those, so I'm gonna have to vote against this.
Sure.
So I just wanna reiterate, and I, I spoke on this extensively at the last City Council meeting, and we had a lengthy and fruitful conversation, I think, at the committee meeting, but I just wanna, again, to clarify and quote from the proposal from the Collins Institute, that, quote, "The center does not recommend or identify specific vendors, products, or technical solutions," end quote, and yet the conversation has been, and, you know, that those are what the city needs to move forward. So if, if the proposal, if the study is not going to provide that information, and that's the information we need, then I don't know what we're spending $28,000 on. So again, I won't support, you know, this study.
Any other counselors? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Smith and Mr. Sapenza.
I'm Joseph Smith. I reside at 131 Oregon Road in Clarksburg. I also own a home in North Adams, so I'm taxpayer here as well. My background is in IT for 22 years, working in the hedge fund industry mostly in New York City, so I know a little bit about this subject at least. I'm still a little concerned that we've had the 54,000 or so, 57,000, I can't remember what line item it was, to have an assistant person or an additional person in IT department for several years, and instead it's been treated as an item to shift each year. I'm not sure why the hire hasn't been advertised already, so that you'd have a wider breadth of a department instead of just the MIS Director. I think then you might be better positioned to be making decisions about specific solutions now, or at least when that person ramps up. So I'm concerned that that still hasn't been addressed in that manner, and I think that's something that should be addressed first. The other thing is that within mass law itself, you have a framework of your requirements as to what you need to be doing with IT in, in a, in a broad sense, and if you have qualified personnel, those qualified personnel should be able to at least look at certain solutions that meet that framework. Now, you might wanna hire a consultant to narrow down certain vendors, because perhaps your in-house staff doesn't have the expertise to look at one vendor versus another fully effectively on their own. However, that should really be the approach, rather than just paying $28,000 for something that's generic. I don't really feel that it makes sense, so, thank you.
Thank you. You could've went on with that, she forgot to set the timer.
Yes, Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street here in North Adams. I'm with Counselor Wilkinson and LaForest. I think that the study is too generic to specify anything in IT without specifying vendors for software, hardware, communication systems, or what have you. I think it's a very vague study, and I think the $28,000 can be spent in a better, in a better way. $28,000 may buy a fairly decent server for the city hall or one of the schools, and I think that our, our own IT people, whoever they may be, could identify what they need, and sometimes just bringing in different vendors on a specific product, say a server or, you know, new computers or software, bringing in different vendors, having them talk to the IT people in the city, that can be done for very little cost, and I think that's a more efficient way of finding out what's out there for software, what other cities use, or even talking to other cities, you know, what does North Hampton use, what does Springfield use, what does Greenfield use, and find out how that would apply to our situation, and be able to take that knowledge, and I think that's something we can do internally in the city of North Adams, and we don't need to pay the, pay for this study. Thank you.
Any other discussion? No more for council? Mayor, you're done?
I'm, I'm good.
So this is a roll call vote.
Well, not here. Cohen?
Um, no.
Harpen?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Lamb?
No.
LaForest?
No.
Moran?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
Bona?
Yes. Motion fails. On to paper number 11,677, an order transferring the sum of 661,488.71 cents from several accounts to several accounts. In City Council, June 26, 2018, voted to refer to a finance committee and postpone to the meeting of July 10. Eight ayes, one nay. We need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
And that was Hopkins and Cohen, and we have discussion. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counsel Wilkinson.
The Finance Committee did, did meet, I could give you a little report if you'd like.
Sure.
Well, the Finance Committee met on July 2nd, and all our members are here. I thank Counsel Harpen and Lamb and Counsel LaForest, of course, the first two being on the committee. Also with us was Mayor Bernard, as well as Mike Canales. Our, our agenda consisted of transfers from one, one account to another in order to transfer to, to balance the budget. There was a total of 53 transfers totaling 661,488 dollars, and we can't forget 71 cents. The committee asked individual line items, and I thought it was very informative. One thing I like about going to committee meetings is you find out so much more than you do just in the council. Pretty much the guts and, I've, I've done this tirade before about committee meetings, but that's where all the work is really done. We found out a lot of different interesting things about each individual department here in the city while we're going, while we're doing this transfer things, things that just don't come up in any other place. I, I found it very informative. I know Counselor Harpen found it very informative, because this is the first time that she had gone through something like this. And so we got all the, asked all the questions, and we had got some very good and interesting answers. But in the, in the end, the Finance Committee announced we'd rate to recommend to the whole council to approve the full amount.
Thank you. Any other discussion, is Counsel Harpen?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you. It was a, a good meeting. I think that this whole thing, the whole transfers, it was, you know, three pages, it was a lot to absorb in a very short amount of time that we had to vote on it. So to bring it to the Finance Committee, for me, as a new counselor, was really advantageous. So we did go through, you know, not every single line, but lines that we thought were important, and, and we did, you know, learn quite a bit about different departments and things that are going on in the city. So it was a productive meeting. The mayor, hopefully, you know, is, is also looking at a new process. We, we got that out of there, out of that meeting, that maybe next year things may look different. He's only had a short period of time to go through the budget. He's been here since January, so he, he hasn't had the opportunity to really dig in like he would be able to next year. So that is one thing that, that I was looking forward to, along with some reporting issues, some monthly reporting issues with reports that are just, you know, really old, just because that's our system. We have a system, you know, like we just said, from the 1990s, a financial system, so, you know, those are the reports that we get, our 1990 reports, and they're very, very difficult to look at. So hopefully, that's something we can work out as well in the next year. So like I said, it was, it was informative, and I appreciate everybody taking the time.
Counsel Lamb?
I'll echo what both Counsel Wilkinson and Counsel Harpen mentioned, and just to give kind of more of a, a direct example of one of the things that I think all of us were somewhat surprised by, if you go to page three of the document, and it's the capital items expense, you see that number of 317,982 dollars. Probably the most interesting thing for me during that meeting was that $250,000 of that is because our solar array is producing too much energy. It's producing more than we actually expected it to produce when it was done, because we've had mild winters. And so what we end up with is an overabundance of solar credits, which we then sell to other communities over the course of the year. So eventually those, all of that ends up being balanced out, but that particular expense is actually because of a, a positive thing that's occurring where we're actually, we're producing more energy than we're actually able to use right now. So when we thought that we were gonna produce 80 percent of the city's energy through the solar plant, we're actually producing about 125 percent of the city's energy. So it's, it's things like that that came out during the meeting. Obviously, that was the biggest one, number-wise, but it, it was informative, it was worthwhile, and I think gave us a much better handle on what we would be voting on tonight.
Just clarity on that, when you say 70 percent of the city, it's the city not-
Like the city-owned buildings.
Right, not, I don't want people out there thinking, my house is covered by 70 percent of the solar-
Universally owned operations.
Yes, thank you. All right, just wanna be clear on that. People would be expecting their electric bills to be dropping tomorrow.
Streetlights, things like that.
Yes, all right. Uh, any other discussion from counselors? Yes, Counsel LaForest.
So, so there was a lot of good news that came out of that meeting, and I, I do just, you know, in fairness, also wanna point out that the salary line from the unfilled MIS position, which predates Mayor Bernard's tenure, is one of the items that we're drawing funds from to offset the other side of this sheet. So I, I hope that we'll, you know, move to fill that position.
Okay. Any other, anybody from the audience?
May I, may I respond to that just really briefly? So I think one of the things that, that we need to clarify is that position was put out about a year and a half ago onto the street, and there, it was determined that there was not a, a sufficient candidate in the pool, so it hasn't been sitting fallow for however, however many years. So I just, I just wanna, I wanna just clarify the misconception that this has been, that this has been riding there with no activity for some period of time. It was put out onto the street, candidates were, candidates applied, and none were determined to be a fit for the position.
Counsel LaForest?
So that is true, and nonetheless, we have been moving that money every year from, from the unfilled position to, you know, to other expenditures. So, you know, going, you know, going forward, that line item to, you know, recruit, you know, a necessary candidate that, you know, may need to be bumped up. But my, my point only in saying that, what, you know, yes, we need to fill that position, but we are moving things imperfectly and have for several years.
Counsel Harpen?
Yeah, I just wanna mention also that, you know, when, when questions were asked at the last meeting regarding this, you know, there were some comments that, you know, the questions were ridiculous, or, you know, they shouldn't have been presented in that forum, but, you know, I think this just goes to show that questions, you know, that are asked, especially a financial, transfers or anything financial, are important questions, and they should be discussed, and, and it's a learning tool. So as I mentioned in the Finance Committee, I, I believe that this document is actually a learning tool for the city and the City Council. You know, we're transferring things from things that we budgeted too much for, and things that we didn't budget enough for. So it's something that we can, we can look at, decide, you know, talk about, have dialogue, why did we over-budget or under-budget, and, you know, be knowledgeable about it for the next year. So I think it's always good thing to question, you know, anything. If, if a counselor wants to question something, I certainly think they have the right to do that, and I thought this brought out some great discussion and learning experiences for more than just myself. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Sort of in response to Counsel LaForest, the, the MIS position that is there, obviously it's nothing I don't think the mayor, past mayor ever wants to remove, because they, they do wanna try to fill it, and I, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're, you're probably thinking in the future, the, the salary might need to go up to make it more enticing, is it-
Well, if we're not recruiting a candidate at this level, then yes, we would probably have to make a more lucrative, a more appealing package.
And that's down the road, and that has happened before. We, we had a public safety commissioner, and that was in our budget, and we couldn't fill it with what we pay, and we ended up, we don't have a public safety commissioner anymore, so that actually did disappear, but for a while that was a credit you would see on this sheet. Anyone from the public? Not hearing any? This is a roll call vote.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion passes. Paper number 11,678, an order authorizing the treasure with the approval of the mayor to borrow the sum of 425,000 for the purchase of fleet vehicles for the public services and building and inspection services under the provision of MGL Chapter 44, Section 7. This was in City Council, June 26, 2018. It was voted to pass to a second reading, and reading and published as required by law. This was voted to refer to the Public Services Committee. We need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Cohen, and a bunch of seconds. And discussion, do we have a report on this? Yes, Counsel-
Yes, we just met prior to, so there's no minutes, but I'll give my takeaway, and then Counsel Harpen and Counsel LaForest could give theirs. Kind of, I wasn't present for discussion during, to approve for the first reading, but one thing that came up was, are we aligning ourselves with the Paris Climate Accord, and are we buying vehicles that are now energy efficient? And the answer to that is yes, because I believe, per the mayor, the Ford Fiesta that was on the line has now been transferred as a Hyundai Sonata Hybrid. So the city will be owning its first hybrid vehicle. And in order to make that happen, some of the tradesman's vehicles, packages were taken out of them to make them more affordable, so that the, the Sonata could be purchased. Along with that, the new F-550s are all certified green idle vehicles, and per Tim LaScarbo, the diesel 550s get around nine miles per gallon with Plows and Sanders versus the older 450s, which get three miles per gallon. So, you know, I know that's one thing that we talk about, is are these resolutions making impact, and I would say already this year, we're seeing for a fleet of eight new vehicles that yes, there is an environmental aspect to it. They also come with a warranty of about, a five-year warranty, and the warranty work can be done locally. In last year, we spent approximately $74,000 on parts alone for the repairing of the old fleet. Those are my major takeaways. If you guys wanna add anything to that.
Yes, Counsel Harpen?
Yeah, sure. So I guess just looking at, well, it was a great experience going down to the public service building down there, and Mr. LaScarbo showing us around and showing us the vehicles, and, you know, how he plans on turning them over, and the ones that, you know, he just can't use anymore, and yeah, I mean, there were some that were there that, I mean, the fender was just rusting right off, so-
I mean, the fender was just rusting right off. So, I mean, there are some vehicles that are in really tough condition. So the ones that aren't in tough condition, he's going to use in other areas. But the vehicles that he wants to purchase are primarily going to be for plowing. So I think that's very important, that we have vehicles that are reliable to plow our roads. It's, we need to have clean roads and we need to provide, you know, a vehicle that our employees can use and not feel frustrated with and not be broken down and not sitting at the garage instead of outplowing. So, I mean, there's more than just the financial aspect to this as well. There's the human aspect of it as an employee. And also, we're saving the money, you know, like Counselor Moran said, there's money that we put in, I think it was $30,000 a year, just on parts that we paid to maintain these vehicles, you know. That does not include the labor that, you know, our men are actually doing to maintain these vehicles on a regular basis. So, you know, it would probably be double the cost if we actually wanted to include that as well. And that was just last year. I mean, the vehicles are a year older now. It could be, it could be more this year. So for the 100, I believe it's $106,000 that we're going to be paying for all these vehicles on a yearly basis. I think the majority of it can be accounted for just in the maintenance costs and just making it easier and a more efficient process for the city and having clean roads. So I am going to vote for this. I did recommend it.
Counselor LaForest?
So I can't add too much more to what Counselor Moran and Counselor Harpen have shared. We did just complete this meeting at about five of seven. Couple of things that I took away, you know, the federal standard on some of these vehicles is seven to eight years. The vehicles, you know, we're replacing the heavier vehicles, the F-550s, you know, are, I believe, some of them are 10 plus 14 years old. So we're almost double the federal standard for the life expectancy of these vehicles. In addition to the $74,000 that we're spending on parts to repair these vehicles, there hasn't been an accounting of the number of hours that the DPW workers are spending doing the repairs on these vehicles. You know, they're, the department is down eight employees since 2010. So the remaining employees could be spending those hours that they're spending doing repairs on these well-aged vehicles, to put it nicely, doing other projects. You know, there's, you know, potholes that still need to be fixed. There's repaving that needs to be done. There are sidewalks that need to be replaced. And unfortunately, with the limited staff, they haven't been able to get to all of those projects. So, you know, hopefully balancing out, you know, the cost of parts, the time that the DPW workers are spending against the $106,000 payment, you know, it's just common sense. It works, you know, makes sense. And historically, previous administrations have been able to replace a chunk of vehicles every four years. This hasn't happened since 2008. Is that correct? So, you know, we're 10 years into a four-year cycle of replacement. I believe the mayor indicated that at our meeting last week, at the City Council meeting last week, that he'd hoped to align this with a, you know, a replacement plan going forward. So I scribbled some notes while we were walking through the building, looking at vehicles, and I don't know that I have anything else to add. You know, I'll just indicate that the replacement of the big orange trucks that will be familiar to folks on the streets comes from Chapter 90 funding and that, that isn't part of this, this plan. And there was a concern addressed by Mr. Sapienza last week also, that local dealerships wouldn't benefit from this. And it was discussed that the closest local dealership, as it were, to participate in the state contract, thank you, is in Holyoke, but that the warranty work would be done by, you know, area dealerships. I think he indicated Johnson and Carbone in particular. So any other dealerships that may be listening may want to, you know, look to the state contracting process to become part of that.
Any other, Counselor Lamb?
I just wanted to say thank you. I know I've been the squeaky wheel two administrations now on the, you know, the Paris Climate Accord and thinking as green as we can be. And I really appreciate the legwork that was done towards, going towards the Sonata. I think, you know, between the fuel savings in the long run and just the fact that it aligns more with our, our resolution from over a year ago now, I feel like that's a step in the right direction. So I just want to thank you.
We're going to need an amendment to this motion though, because the vehicle changed and we actually have the actual listed vehicle in, in the order. So...
However, it says "or equivalent," which I believe when we talked with the clerk prior to her vacation, you would not need an amendment because, because we identified equivalent vehicle.
Okay. She said so.
That was my, that was my understanding.
It's a small amendment, so I mean, we could amend it and it's not, I don't think going to affect the vote, would it? I don't think so. So it's up to you. We can leave it?
I don't think we, personally, I don't think we need to make the amendment. If we did that, we'd probably have to do it for the tradesman's packages too.
Okay.
And we will take your paper back.
All right. So anyone from the audience? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just want to echo same thanks that Counselor Lamb has, that you made that adjustment very quickly. The only other thing I would throw out there is what I threw out in the past, is that as other departments come up looking for vehicles, police is primary one. I hope that we'll set up a framework first with the police department so that they're thinking about that before they come looking for certain vehicles, that they're leased, you know, that's in mind and that there's a discussion ahead of time. Thank you.
Hugh? Anyone else? Anyone else from the audience? Not hearing anyone. This is a roll call vote. And this, we need two-thirds of the whole council, so I don't think...
Okay. Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Tim, you got new vehicles coming. Making nine miles to the gallon. Paper number 11,683, Mayor's Communication Number 46, Regarding RFP Timeline for Sale of City-Owned Properties. Without objection, file the communication and discussion from the mayor.
Thank you. The timeline is fairly, is fairly self-explanatory. This goes back to a question that Counselor Bona asked in the, in the late winter for an update on where we were with RFPs that had gone out in the past, working with Mike New Valley and Procurement, Mike Canales, myself. We worked to update the RFPs that were put out and unsuccessfully responded to in the past and are ready to put those out onto the, out onto the street now for relatively, relatively swift action, hopefully. So we're talking about four, four bids. One is for the, the Salt Yard on Ashland Street, which did come forward, was it last year? And was not, was not, there was one, one successful bidder and it was not approved. Notre Dame Church and School, which we did not receive a bid for the last time. The Poundle Land and Sullivan School, for which there was a proposal that was deemed not complete. So it was not taken forward beyond, beyond bid submission. So these will be published tomorrow and available, each of them, for, for review and for response. We have set a deadline for questions to the Office of Procurement for July 27th. With responses back to bidders on the 31st of July, proposals will be due 13th of August and reviewed by a, by a group within, within my team that week, with the hope of providing conditional approval to the, the successful bidder by the 20th of August. Anything that we need to bring forward to the council, we'll set up on a, on a cycle through, through mid-September and do the negotiation for purchase and sale through the end of the month of September with the goal of closing out the, the first fiscal quarter with any of these that we can, we can accept having been closed.
Hugh? Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Lamb?
Just for the sake of getting this out to as many people as possible, where is this actually posted?
It's posted in the Central Register and then the State Central Register and then we'll put it up on the city site as well, the way we've done with other, other bids.
Thank you. Other Counselors? I can't remember, maybe other Counselors, because we did this not that long ago. You're not, you're just bringing this communication forward. It's not a case that we have to approve.
No, this is, this is informational. The council approved the, putting these out to bid, was it last year, 2017 or late 2016? I don't...
But you don't need council approval again, even though it's new administration, new Counselors?
My understanding is we don't.
Just making sure. I do believe though, if bids come in and they're under a certain amount, then...
Bids, bids under the assessed value, which is why the document you have has the, has the assessment value, those we would, we would, if we felt there was one that was competitive, bring to, bring to council. Anything at or over, I would, I would do informationally, but we would be able to execute.
Or if it was a new property that was being listed, you would want council, council would have to approve that?
A new property.
For an RFP?
If we were, if we were to take something, something new to RFP, yes, we would have to.
Again, because we have new Counselors, if something came up in the future that RFP, typically they do come to council for approval. But because these were a year ago, that's why we don't have to. Counselor Lamb?
You might not know the answer to this off the top of your head, but have these assessments changed since the last time these went up for RFP? It feels, some of the numbers look different. And I don't have my packet from when that happened a year and a half ago or whatever, but I wasn't sure. They seem slightly higher.
I believe they did update assessment.
Okay.
So the, I'm just looking at the, the RFPs. The Poundle one, for example, was based on the, on the town assessment there for FY19.
Okay. Thank you.
Final question. One of the pieces of property that was last, listed last year that is not on here is the Windsor Mill. That is still in...
It's moving its way through the, the process.
Okay. Any hopeful timelines?
Hopefully, I'll be able to come back to you before the end of the summer with, with an update.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Yes, in the past, please. Get up to the mic and this is specific to this agenda item.
I'm not certain. My name is Paul Dugall Jr. from the Ashland Park Highrise. And Clerk Pettersini said I could have two minutes, but I have some questions.
Okay, hold on. So first, speak into the mic so that people at home can hear you.
Right, right, right.
We can hear you, but that's for the TV. And again, make sure it's specific to this agenda item. Okay? All right. Thank you.
It has to do with blight and unsightliness. And I'm not certain if this property is owned by the city.
By which property?
The St. Francis Church Lot.
No. That would not have to do with this. If you want to mention that at the end, you're welcome to, but that's not specific to this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sapienza?
Yes, Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street. This question is for the mayor. On the Notre Dame property, are the church and the school being included in the same package or is it two separate properties?
It's one RFP.
It's one RFP.
Church and school.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? This is not a vote. Any committee reports? Calendar events? Yes, Counselor Moran?
July 28th is our Fourth Annual Appalachian Trail Celebration at the north lawn of the Graylock Elementary School. From 10 to 12, we'll have guided hikes and from 12 to 3, we'll have food and music.
This is also open to the public. If there are any events or calendars people would like, calendar events that people would like to mention? Okay?
Counselor?
Yes, sorry.
Eagle Street Beach Party is Saturday, right? 14th?
I think so.
Making that up in my head? Okay. So come on out. It's always a good time. The street becomes a beach. Where else can you find that in the world?
Yep. And that is Saturday. This is a first for Saturday. So it's typically been on...
It's the 20th year too. So it's a big thing.
Yep. I'm just going to mention, actually, I was, before I was here, I was working on painting pianos. So probably within the next week or two, you're going to see a piano appear in the front of the North Adams Public Library. This is part of a music in the summer, the Berkshires, that's going all over Berkshire County. And the piano that will be in front of the library is sort of dedicated to Counselor, or former state rep and Counselor Galen Carity. So when you see it, it's covered with galaxies and that's because of her mysterious love of astronomy that she donated to the library. And there's eight galaxies, one for every community she served. So that will be appearing soon. So in case you're wondering why, there's a piano with solar systems in front of the library. Open forum. Anyone want to speak in open forum tonight? Yes, almost called you Counselor. Mr. Smith?
So there's just two items I wanted to bring up. And the first is, I want to thank the mayor. We had a quick cordial conversation about the first item, but I still wanted to just bring it up in general. The Marshall Street Pillar Art that was destroyed in May 2017 by Mass MoCA. It was created by Graylock Elementary School students in the summers of 2012 and 2013. The art celebrated North Adams history. The artists who assisted the students and public deserve a yes or no answer from the mayor on a restoration attempt, which is feasible as anti-graffiti coating has been applied. I realize this is an inherited issue for the current administration. However, it has been 14 months since this happened and the mayor should be able to render a decision either way. I want to be very fair in saying that he has tried to work with both parties to see if there could be some kind of compromise. In, in that vein, the artists for the children's art did try to compromise by agreeing to only a partial restoration that was rejected by MoCA. They want no restoration whatsoever at the site. Interestingly, as a city, we put up a banner on the overpass saying downtown this way. And having that art back actually would make it more appealing to walk under that overpass. So that was the first item. The second item I just wanted to mention was that on June 25th, WAMC reported that the North Adam Airport, the city-owned Unicom communication system might have been stolen. The story reported that the, there was an allegation that had been raised that a convicted felon that is currently negotiating a lease with the city for space at, at the same airport may have been the party that took the device. I would submit that it is inappropriate to continue to negotiate that lease before there is a police investigation into this matter. I have inquired with the administration and the NAPD. However, they won't answer anything in regard to this matter. As I understand it as well, not having a Unicom can pose a danger for some pilots. So I think it is a matter that should be addressed in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in open forum? Anyone else wish to speak? Oh.
Mr. Dugall is here.
Mr. Dugall wanted to speak.
Mr. Dugall, if you want to speak on that issue now, please come up to the mic and repeat your name and address for the record again. You get two minutes.
Two minutes. All right. Thank you Clerk Pettersini and the North Adams Council for giving me two minutes. My name is Paul Dugall Jr. of Ashland Park Highrise. Now, I'm not articulate and I need a spokesperson who can edit my writing, but I will struggle through. I'm a former council candidate who has been socially active and matters concerning abuse in North County, jobs, real estate and tourism. I emailed and spoke to Clerk Pettersini today about blight and unsightliness. Blight and unsightliness at the former St. Francis Church Lot. Nine or 10-foot concrete sidewalk walls need to be removed after sand, gravel and filler trucked away at low cost. I stress a low-cost project. My father agrees with me. He said it is an eyesore. We both were born in North Adams and worked here. Three of my 24 addresses and three of my 24 jobs were flat iron block in library vicinity. Three of my 24 addresses and three of my 24 jobs were flat iron block in library vicinity. Created by this will be money, money for private businesses and guidance for the bureaucracy. That's all I got. Thank you, Paul Dugall Jr. from Ashland Park Highrise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Open forum is closed. Mayor's concerns?
Thank you. I want to just mention two city staffing issues. I want to thank Counselor Hopkins for asking for an update on the office clerk position in the city clerk's office. I circulated in response to that a draft job description to the counselors today, to Counselor Hopkins and Bona, and to the city clerk for an initial review. Once that's finalized, that can be posted and moved forward for interviews and review. The other position I want to mention is that we have an opening for a fiscal and compliance officer in the Office of Community Development. That's available due to an internal, an internal shift in someone moving to another office in the city. That is posted on the city website and on Berkshire Jobs, and I would just ask anyone to share that posting with anyone in your network who you think might be interested in that position. Hopefully, the council received from Director Moranti the information about a regional emergency preparedness workshop that's going to be held on Thursday, July 26. It's going to run from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at St. Elizabeth Parish Center, and participants will be assigned roles as part of the emergency response exercise. If you haven't received it, let me know, we'll get that forwarded to you. This is an exercise that's funded by the Western Region Homeland Security Advisory Council, and it's a result of planning efforts executed by the Regional Planning Commission and the members of the Northern Berkshire Regional Emergency Preparedness Committee, which includes members of our police-fire ambulance service as well as others from this region. I just want to mention, having gone through the zoning process through the spring, I just want to let you know that we are closing in on the opportunities for our first host community agreements, and I will be able to talk to you more about that at an upcoming, at an upcoming meeting. And what I can say is that the host agreement that we have in place was drafted by, or that, not in place, but that we are working through, was drafted by KP, so that's one of the advantages of having the relationship that we have with that firm as the city solicitor. And they're working with a number of cities and towns across the state and have developed a strong agreement that provides good protection and control for the city. I was going to mention, the Windsor Lake Concert Series continues Wednesdays at 6:30 this week. It is Bernice Lewis. The following Wednesday, it is Quincy, and I will echo Counselor Lamb's note about the Eagle Street Beach Party. It is the 20th year of the party, and it kicks off on Saturday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Liaison updates or counselors' concerns? Licenses? I don't think we, did we have any licenses? No licenses, no correspondence. A motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.